I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. Come on. Hello? Check, check. Oh, it's Talk Lab. We're just a couple of minutes away from getting started. I'd like to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Colby Fulfer will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberally, just as for all. Let's pray.
Father, we thank you for this day and for all of your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. And Lord, we just pray that tonight you would help give us wisdom. We know that the book of Proverbs tells us that a holy reverence for you is the beginning of wisdom and understanding. And I pray that you would grant that to us tonight as we make decisions in the city. And I pray your blessing be upon every person in our town in your name.
Amen. Thank you, Colby. We do have large print copies of the agenda over here. I think Alan's right there. Alan's holding them up. If that would be helpful to anyone, you're welcome to get one. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Springdale City Council, Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. And I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Captain J. Cox.
Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We do, I would like to ask to add an agenda item. Y'all got that today? We sent it out to you. It wasn't, it has to do with an invoice for the AWINS project that's already been approved, but we didn't have that in time to get that on the agenda. We got it too late after the agenda went out. So, could I, I would entertain a motion to add that to the agenda as item 13A. Got a motion?
Say.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item four, comments from citizens. This is the portion of each council meeting the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If there are any of our residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five. Alan Lord, Alan?
Thanks, I'm not asking for anything this time. I want to give you, just let you know about a couple, three awards if my staff come up. There's three awards. Two of them came from the Southeastern Museums Conference, like the SCC. It's our SCC. And the two awards, the first is for what they call the Emerging Museum Professional Award. This recognizes professionals who have demonstrated excellence in leadership in museum activities at their institution, within the museum professional as a whole, and especially in the southeast region. And that was awarded to Kim Hosey, who's our education specialist and weekend manager. It was awarded based on her excellent work at the Shallow Museum, especially with children's programs and our loan boxes, and her presentations and officer roles in such museum organizations as the Arkansas Museum Association, the Arkansas Living History Association, and the big one, the Association for Living History, Farm, and Agricultural Museums, and national work she's doing. So, congratulations to Kim.
Great.
The second award from the Southeastern Museums Conference is the Excellence in Exhibition Bronze Award. This recognizes and rewards excellence in research, design, development, educational value, and effectiveness of exhibitions in the southeast region. This was awarded for our exhibit hall renovation between 2014 and 2019, accepted by Curtis Morris, our exhibits manager. The museum won this bronze award up against some of the largest and most prestigious museums in the southeast for the renovation that started in 2014. Basically, every element of our former exhibit hall has been, has gone away, and we have new, modern exhibits. A lot of them have interactivity. We have bilingual labels, a lot of hands-on elements. And Curtis was the main person who worked on that, so thank you, Curtis.
And the last award is probably our most prestigious in the way.
This was awarded from the American Alliance of Museums. That's the National Museum Association all over the country. It's the Innovation in Museum Education Award. It's awarded, it recognizes, encourages, and celebrates innovation in museum education. And most of you are aware of what this was. This was for our 2018 project with the Marshallese community to build the Marshallese traditional fishing vessel at the museum campus for four weeks in April and May of 2018. One that brought many accolades, but also a great community engagement with the museum and the Marshallese community. And so, accepting it is Judy Costello, who's our education manager.
Right.
And that's all the way in the way they have to live in them for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you to all your staff, those here and others. Isn't it fun not having to ask for anything?
Yeah.
Isn't it fun to just come here?
Still a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's still a few things hanging, I know. All right, thanks, thanks again. Item six, approval of minutes. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to look over those minutes. Hopefully, if there are no additions or changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seven is procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel? Looks like we just got it a A tonight.
We left the B off.
They're supposed to be A and B? Okay. There's a B there, as sane as normal.
I'm going to go for A and B.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, I'm going to turn number eight, the public hearing, over to our city attorney, Ernest Kate.
Thank you. You'll notice on the agenda, under Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee, there's two ordinances. One is an ordinance establishing sewer rates to be charged by the city of Springdale, which will be effective January 1st, 2020. It was recommended from the committee on October 14th to the council tonight with recommendation for approval. The statute requires that a public hearing be held before we consider the ordinance, so we're going to hold the public hearing. We've published notices, the public hearing is required by the statute. So, is there anyone here who would like to be heard on the issue of the new sewer rates to be effective January 1st, 2020? Close the public hearing and we want to item nine?
All right. We'll move on to 9A, which is an ordinance, repealing ordinance number 4950, establishing sewer rates to be charged by the city of Springdale and for other purposes.
Your word is your vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Directors here, Heath, Ward, with some of his staff?
We're happy to answer your questions.
Okay.
Heath, how long does it take y'all to, how long did y'all plan all this out?
Well, what we did is, of course, five years ago, we made, you know, we come to y'all and said, hey, trying to do the kind of master planning, you know, five years. Really, we started this exercise about two years ago, just kind of forecasting, but really looking at some hard numbers and what we have to do for the next five years. It's been about a year-long process. And it started with the financial planning, and then we start to get into that, then we start looking at the capital projects that we need to do. And as everybody knows, you'd always like more money and to do more projects, but then we take that laundry list and we get out this process, and we narrow it down to what we think we're going to need in the next five to six years. And those three big things were the western corridor, we need to do some expansion and clarification of wastewater plant, and we need to have very aggressive maintenance and rehab on our existing systems to go ahead and grow, especially the whole park. So, roughly, roughly a year, it looks hard numbers.
Two points I want to make. The reason I ask that is because I know we've had other opportunities that have been presented to us about Bethel Heights, and I just want to establish that what y'all have been working on preceded any of the conversations about a special election that may or may not take place. I just, I didn't want people to think that we're doing this to fund another opportunity that may come up later. Y'all have been working on this well before that was a conversation. And I didn't want people to think that it's because of rates was to pay for that.
No, and we did, and we did not bake that into the cake, so to speak. But we looked at strictly the areas, service areas that we have responsibility for today, and what the needs of the community would be over the next, over the next five years or so. We also look beyond that, but we also know as time marches on, that changes, and we'll solidify the next two to three years, more than four, about what's going to happen in year eight, nine, or 10, depending on how developed. That is correct.
I think even raising these rates is still, at least expenses, or I think maybe there's one community that might have lower price than us on water, at least 20, for the range rates, but still typically, in comparison to other cities, Springdale is still at the very bottom.
That's correct. That sheet that I presented to council was kind of blurry, but I think what you got out of it, and I still haven't been able to print one off, it's better than that. When you looked at their base, the people who put it together, their base was 4,000 gallons. We'll be neck and neck with Rogers on Water, but that'll be a very short-lived deal. We will still wear the crown of being the lowest rates in the world. My friend and Rod, my counterpart acknowledged that this morning, and says, you're going to, you're going to be there for a while, because we're presenting to their council tonight. But we were at roughly $13 for 4,000 gallons of water, even with the rate increase that go up to around 13, 40, 50, somewhere in there. And when you looked at the highest one in the region, which is Washington Water 40, which was not there, but I calculated, the same amount of water, after you add taxes and stuff to it, about $60, but same, same amount. And everything else is similar.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, item B is an ordinance, repealing ordinance number 4951, establishing water rates to be charged by the city of Springdale and for other purposes. Heath answered some of that, too, while we were, in his earlier comments. Any other questions or comments?
Any order, deep pass.
Say. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
I just thought I got to see them all.
Whoop, whoop, whoop. What's that?
I just thought I got to see them all.
Yeah. It was something new for you.
Yeah.
Not tearing down a house, or, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Denise?
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Well, thank you, Heath. I know you've got a couple of staff members here with Terry and Rick. I know we've got our commission, bar commission chair, Chris Weiser, and everyone, we appreciate the job.
Sure, we don't have to hear from you, dude.
Hmm?
We don't have to hear from you.
No, we don't have to bring them up.
I can just say, you're a wonderful staff.
No, that, yeah, thank you.
You're a water steward.
Yeah. Yeah, they do. So, yeah, so bottom line is, you all can go watch a basketball game now.
I got other things to do, unfortunately, but those of us who can go see the basketball game as well.
All right.
Thank you, and thanks for the confidence.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Before we move on, I, just to prove that people do watch this, I just got a text saying that the link was not working, and so they went to watch it on YouTube, and there's no sound. So, Ashley, if anybody can help with that, that'd be great. All right, item 10, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. I see Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development, making her way to the microphone. Patsy?
We have one item on the agenda this evening. This is the final plan for some review subdivision. You can see the location of the subdivision on the picture up above, and then Mike, if you'll move on through to see what the subdivision itself looks like. Playing Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of this final plan. Title of the ordinance, reading the ordinance, accepting a new addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas to be known as Summer Review Subdivision, a subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, the Fire Emergency Center. And we do have the bylaws of the Property Owners Association and the Declaration of Covenants that's required as part of this, because it's a PUD. So, we have all the documents.
Any order, deep pass.
Say. Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Anybody else? Comments, questions?
Is this, that final plan is the same as the picture that you had up there before?
Yeah.
Or is it?
It fits. I was out there today. It's that.
That's part of it. That final plan is in there?
It's in that, in that shape and there it is. And it's on the ground. I was out there today in the streets area. The potential park looks good and ready to see it.
All right, so it comes off the left, it'll come to the road.
It has access up to the road, too.
It's the one to the north.
Yes, the street to the north, yeah.
It does.
Comments? Anybody? All right, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
All the ordinance, mercs, across carry 7-0.
All right, item 11, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Committee met, considered item 11A, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for our tech services and fire station number nine located at 7551 Miss Downey Road, Project And it was going to move to the council board with a recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Will the resolution pass?
Say. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
Fire and His Committee also met and discussed the resolution authorizing the execution of the construction manager contract for Springdale Fire Station number nine, and that was also voted to the council board's recommendation.
Will you read it for adoption?
Got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
A parred resolution authorizing the purchase of the property at 903 Joy Street to expand fire station number four, and committee board with no recommendation.
Chief Irwin's here, if anyone, but I know he couldn't be at committee, he was out of town, but if any of you, Chief, you want to come? Give a little background to this besides the, besides what we already know?
Basically, this is the property directly behind station number four. The reason that we're asking for CIP funds to purchase that is because we don't know exactly what we want to do with it. And the way I understand it, if we buy it with bond money, then we've got to do something with that piece of property. So, that's why we're asking for CIP funds to purchase.
And we may not, we may not have the funds, we don't know yet if we'll have the funds in the bond to do enough to qualify for bond, for the bond to purchase the property.
Correct.
If, Mayor, if in the future we do find the funds, can the CIP fund be reimbursed for this purchase to have that part and parcel of the total cost of the project? For instance, if we're converting into parking?
I, I'm going to, I'm going to say I believe we can, but I've been wrong before. And Wyman, do you have an opinion on that? If we, if at the end of the bond, we have dollars left, can we reimburse CIP?
Yes, I think we can.
Okay.
But we'd have to have a, probably an opinion from the bond council. In the bond fund, we didn't put renovation, but we just put new construction, so we'd have to confirm that.
Well, if we, if we did a parking lot, that would not be a renovation, that'd be new construction.
That would be new construction.
That's true.
I thought that's why he got paid $3 million for, as our bond council.
We just, this is an opportunity, the house is on the market, and probably the cheapest we're going to buy it if we.
And we can't buy it without a hazardous waste examination of the property.
We'd like to walk through it before it's torn down, though, just for old time's sake. Yeah. Actually, I was saved in that house, so I am going to walk back through it. Yeah. So, yeah. I don't, we don't have.
Move resolution be adopted.
Okay, here we got one. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
So, that, we are going to look into that, though, if we can reimburse.
Yeah, if we, if the funds are available.
We'll make sure and get that answer. Yeah. Well, I, I'm as confident as a former upholsterer can be that, that we can do that. But we'll, we'll get, we'll nail that down. Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
And then finally, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of extraction equipment for the fire department. And it was also voted on and sent to council with a recommendation for approval.
And that's coming completely from 833 funds?
Yes.
Okay.
The ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? All right, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
All the ordinance, mercs, across carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item 12, Street and Capital Improvement Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Rick Evans.
We have been last week's street safety, we have four resolutions to give at night, and the percolating resolution authorizing renovations for four bathrooms in this Springdale Public Library.
Let me, before we get a motion on this, of course, Marcia's here, and she can speak to this, too. I had a conversation with, with Sam Hollis today from, from Milestone. I also, actually, the, I asked Wyman to tweak, because of some questions and some concerns voiced at the committee meeting, I asked Wyman to make some changes to the proposed resolution, and they didn't make it in the drop box, so that's the hard copy you have before you tonight. There may still be some other changes we could make. I think the gist of it is that we're not asking, we're not asking to, to commit money tonight, because we want to find out, we want to get closer to how much this is going to cost. And in my conversation with Sam, they, they were just, Milestone was supplying a very, very preliminary, just, uh, uh, price, and they haven't even really begun their work in working with the architect yet, which of course is the, one of the big advantages of having a construction manager involved. And I don't know how the, exactly, the resolution needs to be worded, but what I would like to see, and what I would be more comfortable with, because money is tight right now, and it, I don't, I do think the project is needed, Marcia, but I think we could, I think it would be better to let Milestone do their work, whatever we have to do there, working with the architect, and then come back to us with exactly what changes are going to be made and what those, with a, what those will cost. Is that, is that a fair representation of what y'all can do for us, Sam? So, I don't know, Ernest, what would need to be changed in the, in the hard copy you have here to allow that? I don't know that that not to exceed 200 needs to be in there right now.
We're, we're really just authorizing the, the exploration and.
We are engaging.
And gathering our proposals by Milestone to present to us a, a.
Not to exceed, guaranteed maximum.
A guaranteed, uh, 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 project cost, but at this point, we're just authorizing Milestone to proceed with procuring the various estimates in order to put together a proposal. Is that not correct?
That's what I'd like to see, if we can.
You, you have to have an appropriation for the contract for Milestone and, and the architect before they can do their work, but you can't bring.
But it, but as long as it's coming back to council, then we can.
Come back to council before we pay anything other than those fees.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we can't have a resolution to engage them to get the bids and.
Well, you can have a resolution to engage, but if you hadn't got an appropriation to pay them, then you can't enter into a contract.
Well.
With, this, this resolution just sets a budget for the project, but the number for construction's got to come back to you for approval. That's, we understand that, but all we need to do now is just engage Milestone to, to put a proposal together for us. That's all we're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?[1243.12]